This time I'll call the special call board meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead us in our board prayer, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone please rise for the prayer.
Let us pray. Congress heavenly Father, again, we want to thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. We want to thank you for the, for the great education we've been able to offer to the children of Haywood County. And Lord, especially during these times of the COVID and the pandemic and the uncertainty questions, Lord, please let us always turn to you for the answers, because we know you have them. And help guide us as we make the decisions for the education of the children of Haywood County schools to be the best possible way that we can educate children and the best means. And Lord, I do pray for safety among our staff, among our families, and among our children. And we thank you that we have been having some good success with educating children. Hopefully, Lord, soon, we'll be able to get them back into classroom full-time to some normalcy. And Lord, pray that our country develops a vaccine and the other world develops vaccines to help fight this virus. Lord, we know that all things are in your hands, and we give you the praise and glory for all that you do. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. The next regular board meeting will be held here at the EC, December fourteenth at seven o'clock. I will say that we're going to have everybody sworn in. Are we still planning on about four thirty? Four o'clock? And for those that have been recently re-elected, we'll also let you know when we're going to do our ethics training. And we're going to work with the new board member, Mr. Logan Nesbit, on some orientation before the regular board meeting. Any other announcements that need to be made? Are there anything that needs to be added to the agenda? Okay, this time I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Dr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second? Say, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on a motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those who say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I would like to mention that under announcements that Mr. Francis, our vice chair, has joined us through the telephone, I believe, and I see Mr. Burnett has joined with us. So we do have them joining us electronically. This time we'll turn it over to Dr. Nocti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll give a very brief introduction. As you all know, we did a second bid for the upgrade of the old Annex Two building, which we'll rename as the Central Office at some point in time. We have that information in. Dr. Putnam and Josh and other folks in support services have worked very, very hard to bring you good information tonight to talk about selecting architect, selecting options or alternatives on the bid, and for us to give you the best financial picture that we can give you tonight for your consideration. I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam if it's okay. Mr. Francis?
That'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've provided you with two bid sheets. The very top bid sheet is our current most recent bid or rebid, however you want to state it. And the second sheet underneath is the first bid on the Central Office project. You can see that on the rebid or current bid sheet, we had four bidders, that being Davy Construction, John Bergen Construction, Kiri Builders, and Western Builders. So we had four contractors choose to rebid the Central Office project. And that's down a couple from, from the first time, and you can see that reflected on the sheet that you have on the bottom. We have a few goals for tonight, if you will. Number one, we need to select a contractor. And number two, we need to select alternates. And then the third thing, after we've selected the contractor and selected which alternates, we'll need to, I'll describe some funding options that are available. Okay? So I'm going to turn it over to Josh to speak through the bid sheet and answer or entertain any questions here in just a moment. The first thing that I want to point out before I turn it over to Josh is you will notice that based on these numbers, the rebid sheet, the apparent lowest bidder is John Bergen Construction. He has a base bid of one million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Alternate one, that's the exterior improvements at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Alternate A two, the elevator addition, is three hundred and two thousand dollars. Alternate three, rooftop mechanical screen, is forty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Alternate E one, owner's preferred brand fire alarm, no charge. Alternate E two, lighting fixtures and lighting, at sixty-seven thousand dollars. Alternate E three, data and fiber cabling, at a hundred and one thousand dollars. And then alternate E four, card readers and access control devices, at ninety-one thousand dollars. Unit prices for, for linear foot are listed just immediately following that. So when you add all those things up, you take the base bid and all alternates. John Bergen Construction is the apparent low bidder. The reason we've broken these alternates out is so that you could see some areas or options for cost savings. And Josh will speak to those. He's run most of the numbers on this and can speak more accurately to those. So Josh, I'm going to turn it over to you at this time.
Okay. What we done, we asked, actually asked for the rebid is we wanted to try to save as much as we could for the school system itself. So alternate one is the exterior improvements, and that's all the fiber board. That's actually tying the roof system in, doing the block work and the rock work on the outside. Alternate two is the elevator addition itself. Alternate three is one you may have questions about. It is a rooftop mechanical screen. That's just to hide the actual HVAC unit that will be sitting on the roof. That does not have to be done. We have spoke with architect. They've talked to the Town of Angel Planning Board. And at this time, the Town of Angel Planning Board, when they first took the drawings to them, told them they would not make us do that. So unless something changes between now and when the contract's signed, that forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars could be eliminated right off the top. And, and all that is is just a screen that goes around the HVAC unit on top where you cannot see it from the street. Alternate E two, we asked about lighting fixtures, because we were getting some other quotes just on our own in the maintenance department for light fixtures. The light fixtures that are placed in the building at this time are around five hundred and fifty dollars apiece. They're an enclosed fixture, where it's a cylinder fixture. And you can't just change the bulb. You have to change the whole fixture if something happens. So that's how it was bid out. There's also a lot of emergency lights on the outside and on the inside where it's a emergency pack. To where if the light goes out, you got to change a whole emergency pack fixture out. So we just asked it to be bid as an alternate, to see what we could come in at. I will say this, we got a budgetary bid on the fixtures that's in the project now. It's in the bid documents. And our budget, our budgetary bid was seventy thousand. So the sixty-seven thousand, he's not making any money on that. But I do think we can go back if we choose to use John Bergen or whichever contractor we look at before we sign a contract and do a negotiation with the low bidder to try to save a little money there. Instead of saying it's going to be sixty-seven thousand, we might be able to save twenty thousand. We might be able to save ten thousand, but that's just a, a way to try to save a little bit of money. And especially from a maintenance standpoint, years down the road, you don't want one or two light fixtures to start going out and you're not able to get that fixture seven or eight years down the road. So that's what that is. The alternate E three, the data and fiber cabling, we just had them to look at it to where if they did not do the, if they did not provide the data and fiber cable, and we looked at the school system doing the data and fiber cable, and the price is one hundred and one thousand dollars on the low bidder. Fifty percent of that is material. So that's not going to be a savings of a total one hundred and one thousand dollars. Fifty percent of that will be cable, will be the actual data connections. So you can figure about half of that's what you'd saved if IT and the maintenance department was to go in and try to do that ourselves. The card reader on E four is ninety-one thousand on the low bidder. This is if we do wireless access door controls. That price, forty thousand of that is also material.
So realistically, of the, on the alternates, I'd like for you to identify the alternates that we would look at doing in-house and what the savings would be.
Okay. We, the only one that I could see us doing in-house and saving you some money that I feel like that the maintenance department is capable of doing would be alternate E three. And I did talk to Kim a little bit today, and she's, she don't have real good feel and have people right now with the ransom wire going on, but I did pull some of my guys in. I think it's something we could do that would really help. If you choose us to do that, I do think we could probably pull the cables. I do not know about us making the connections. I don't know that we can. That would be an IT. That'd be something we'd need to check with Kim about. But I know they're still behind from the ransom wire act. The other thing that I think that we can do, I really don't think E two is an option for the school to do. I really think we just need to let the contractor handle it. But I think we need to negotiate before we sign a contract to see if there is a different type fixture or different type lighting package that we could use to save some money in that situation.
Are you going to go with the lighting fixtures? I'm sure you're going to try to do LEDs and...
It would be LEDs.
Something that can be replaced.
Correct.
Fairly simple, easy. Another question I have is card readers and access controls. How many doors is that going to, every door?
That would be every door on the interior.
Is there a reason why we need them on every door? I mean, is...
I don't know that we do need them. We would just, we just bid that as an alternate.
And I could see the exterior doors, but all interior doors? I mean, I'm asking, is that something security-wise that we need or...
No, that is also one that we've identified as a, a good possible. As you, you correctly pointed out, the top and bottom exterior doors would, it would be needed there because we, we will need reception, if you will, for visitors at the top floor and bottom floor. But if we have cameras and access control on those exterior doors, one centralized clerical position can manage both those exterior doors, top and bottom. So that's really the only place we need access control. Variations of this exist. You could go ahead and pull the cable in case you ever wanted to add access control but not install the locking mechanism. It'd just be, the wire would be pulled to those doors.
Is the exterior doors not already in the base bid? This is just including interior?
Exterior doors are included.
They're included in the base bid.
Is that correct?
They're, they're included in the base bid, but the card access to the exterior doors is not included in the base bid.
Are the exterior doors?
I don't think it is. I'll have to look back and, I can actually look while we're doing this, but I don't think they are.
That was, that was my question, because I thought the exterior doors, we, pretty well, that was a known that they need to be access control, but none of the interior doors was my thoughts.
So let me take another stab at it.
Okay.
Of the alternates that are listed here, are, are there any alternates listed that you would completely eliminate, like A three? Is that something where, that you're suggesting we just don't do at all?
Well, I suggest we just don't do it at all unless the planning board comes back for some reason, tells the architect it has to be done once it is signed off.
And what about E four then? What, what's your recommendation on that?
My recommendation would be just not to do it at all except for the exterior doors.
So why is the exterior improvements, alternate A one, why is it separated out? There has to be a reason it's separated out.
Exterior one is the outside look of the building. That's the fiber board. We all looked at, we looked at doing that in-house. It's a very complex system. The way it has to be tied together, it has to be tied back into the roof in order for it to have the warranty. And I just do not feel like that we have the skill set to complete that task and make it look appropriate.
So it, it was just out there just in case we did or could?
Correct. We just put it out there to see what it would save us money if we was able to do it entirely.
If that was something that's left out, alternate one now, you say three to five years down the road, that price could possibly double?
It could.
Or of course, it could go the other way, which that would...
And you would also, you would also have to redo the roof, the drip edge, because whenever you put the fiber board up, then it has to cap over. You'd have to take the cap back off and redo it at that point as well.
That's what I'm saying. There's more than just putting the front on the building. There's more details that would have to be removed by the previous, or by these modifications that we're going to be looking at tonight.
That's correct.
And we, we did get some indication from contractor that they got a good price on it, a good savings on it right now on this bid.
Just hope we can find another good savings somewhere along the line.
So if we were to look at the apparent low bidder's base bid, and we add, we start adding the alternates. We're adding A one, A two, eliminating A three. E one's no cost. E two with savings.
With savings.
E three with savings. Even if we, I mean, it's going to cost something, right? We, we know the material costs fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's correct.
Or I should say E three with savings.
Yes.
And then E four with, uh, interior doors eliminated. Now I know that y'all done done the math and I don't have to. So what's that coming out to as a total?
I'd like to say something about E three. I appreciate Josh and them trying to do it, but I don't know about this data fiber cable. If we, um, if they run into a mess, we're going to have to pay somebody double to fix it. Well, I've seen it before. I've seen it in the mail. I've seen it at my house trying to do so. We're probably going to be better off not, if they had a hundred, no offense, if you had a hundred percent electrician or somebody that was, that did this. But when he said, "We don't know about the cables," then we're going to have to find somebody to know about the cables. So my opinion is, no offense, is we leave that alone. I don't think we're going to save money. We got to have data. We've got to have that working right. We don't need to chase it for the next two or three years. And that's just my opinion, but I'm not no expert in it, but I wanted to say that, so.
And I, I will add, we have experts in cable ends and, and they can certify those cable ends, but it comes with a cost. In talking with Kim Guffey or, or Kim Jackson, our IT director, she'd have to pull, for a project this size, she has to pull three off their current maintenance and upkeep and filling tickets throughout the county. Forget ransomware. We're all, you know, we've got a lot of virtual, um, uh, option to, to manage as is. So the timing on that's horrible. So you got, they're about two months out on tickets. And so that would mean pulling them away from smartboard installations and computer upgrades and filling tickets where teachers have issues with technology. So it comes at a pretty high premium to pull them off that. But I just wanted to clarify, we do have folks that can do it and do it correctly. But I'm, I'm agreeing with you that I think it's going to create real issue with filling tickets.
Well, it's just my opinion. We don't, we don't want to get into that. We, I, I agree with Ronnie. I, I don't think you want to get into that. So that being said, let me ask this question one more time, a little different. So if you take the apparent low bidder and you add in the alternates, you negotiate on the lights and take out card readers for interior doors, where are we going to come in at?
Might add that up.
Well, just hold on, Josh, and I'll help you out. How much savings, how much savings do you think without the forty-five thousand, five hundred? If you take alternate A three out, without savings on E two and E four, you're looking at two point, two million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. If you do savings on sixty, on E two, if you have forty, if you have fifty-one thousand dollars savings, does that sound right on E four? Do you think you could do that if you just do part of that?
E four, we'd just take it out altogether.
You'd just take it out altogether?
Yeah.
Because the out, out, the outside doors was already on cart, was part of the bid.
So if you take that one out, you're looking at two, two million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Then if you have twenty thousand dollars savings at, on E two, which would bring that down to forty-seven thousand dollars, which I don't know whether that would be correct, you would have two million, four hundred and forty-seven million dollars.
Forty-seven thousand?
Two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So right there is what you would be authorizing if you take a low bidder right now, somewheres in that ballpark, plus or minus fifty thousand.
What was that total number again?
Two million, four hundred and six... Well, two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And somebody can check my math. I didn't pass math in school.
Only other thing to take into account is a three to five percent change order that you just, you run into them. So you want to allow for three to five percent change order. That'd be a hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly, somewhere around.
So you're looking around roughly two point six.
It came in at two million, six hundred and three thousand and five hundred dollars with the, um...
With all altern...
With removing the alternate, that's with all alternates, and then making the adjustments, Mr. Kirkpatrick named, then you're at two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand. But you would want to budget two million, five hundred and sixty, uh, two hundred and, two million, six hundred and seven, two million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, just so you've got the three to five percent change order.
I'll clarify one more time. You said you were looking that up, so the exterior doors are included?
I'm looking it up. I do not think they are, but I think that we can work at it in negotiation where it would be.
There's still going to be something on E four then if it's not, if the exterior doors are not included.
What would, what would be helpful, Josh? What's the unit price on access control on two exterior doors?
Probably about fifteen hundred bucks. And you got to buy a card reader. So you're probably looking at five grand.
You're looking at five grand versus...
Compared to ninety-one thousand, yeah, that's...
And that's something too, we can do when we choose a low bidder and we get in negotiation before we sign the contract. We'll just say, you know, we, we're going to go with you. We, we need to, we need a little help or, you know, give us some...
I think you have to listen to everything. I think realistically, if you look at the savings that we're having, that would take up contingency basically. About a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-six thousand, plus or minus. If you come in and you do, you know, well, I think we need to be looking at about two point six. You know, we don't need to be coming back to the board to bump up that number if something happens. And you, I've never been on a construction site that we didn't have something come in unforeseen that you just don't know. And so... What contingency were you building in? Were you saying five percent?
Three to five percent.
Well, if you do five percent of two million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, that's a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, if you do five percent of that. So you're saying you're setting aside, so one twenty-three...
You had the one thirty-five.
Was it one thirty-five?
Which is it, two six?
Yeah.
Because you will have, as it come up, it's, it's inherent that you'll have them.
Just hope it is not anything major.
Yeah, you're going to take my fifty dollars a month and pay for it. I get it.
All right.
So roughly, we're looking at, given the money that we have still left from what we've already done at Annex Two that came from the commissioners, we're, we're looking at about two million dollar investment by the school system.
Well, if we can, let's hold on that. I want to, I'm going to go through the payment options, the, the money here in just a minute. But I did want to ask, are y'all ready to select a, a contractor for the project?
Well, I'd like to know where the money's coming from before I select anything.
Okay, all right. I'll go ahead and talk through that. So we have... So we have, uh, we have some funds available. Uh, this, these funds come from Article forty and forty-two sales tax. And that's money, um, that has to come to us through state sales tax dollars.
How much was that again? I'm sorry.
And we got an amount in May that was one point three million. We were told that was our capital fund balance from state sales tax dollars. So I asked today, and as of June thirtieth of this year, we have two million, three hundred, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. So it went up a million from May to June.
They're in a j-. We, we would want to double check that because we did not know what the county, what the county was holding in capital reserve until last May. And we think that's right. Trevor has shared a couple emails that he has had back and forth with the county finance person, not our person, but their person. We would want to double check that. And so we, we think that is two point three million. That is also contingent upon tax revenues coming in as they should uh, to cover the GO bond and, uh, other payments that we're expected to have this year. Uh, they, that, those funds have been coming in.
The son encumbered.
Yes. So I asked that specific question. And so we received, uh, nine hundred thousand in capital outlay money, right? And I wanted to make sure that of this two million, three hundred, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents, that that nine hundred thousand was not coming out of that. And the answer is no. I asked about the Pisgah debt payment. Y'all just approved a hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to be paid toward debt service, uh, for the Pisgah addition. And that amount, amount does not come out of the two million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then, uh, also indicated were the two general obligation bonds, which are Bethel Elementary and other projects that were encumbered there. And that total is one million, six hundred, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. And none of those amounts um, come out of the two million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. Unless state revenues will not support those payments. Okay, so this amount was given to us and it, based on current state tax revenues as they stand right now, all of these payments, the nine hundred thousand, the one hundred eighty-two thousand, and the one million six, all can be covered under state tax revenues for this year. Okay, left sitting and unencumbered is two million, three hundred, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. I've asked it every which way I know to ask it. And every which way I ask it, and as Dr. Nolte indicated, in writing via, via an email, this money is unencumbered.
So, uh, now we, and Trevor can tell you about the other funds that we have. I, I just want to say upfront, I know he would say it, but I want to be redundant. We could not, we could not pull one, uh, two point three because we have to have some sitting there for floods. Those of you who are on the board, when we went through Ivan and Francis, know that you had to buy doors and install doors before you could get reimbursed for those stores. But we could pull, uh, a significant amount of that. Trevor and I have both talked. Uh, we would also want to talk with the county manager to get his opinion on it, but we would, we would think that we would want to hold at least five or six hundred thousand of that. If everybody felt comfortable pulling that, plus part of the funds that the county gave us earlier when they deed us the building. I know I'm a little ahead of you, but I just, I think some of this stuff we want to say two or three times, just so we're all on the same page.
All right. And so, um, everybody feel good about the explanation for the two million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Good? Okay. So, uh, the next available funds, they gave, uh, the county gave us towards the building, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What is left of that seven hundred and fifty thousand is six hundred thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
And everything's been paid to that point?
Ev- everything, everything has been paid except, so all of that money it's out of that seven fifty, so you've worked, came from seven fifty down to six hundred thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Here's what it's paid for. As best as abatement and removal. The placement of the roof.
You put the dollars with that as your, or if you got it handy.
Make sure I brought it with me. Thank you. So, um, PFA Architects has been paid forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Southeastern Environmental Group, as best as abatement services, fifty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. Benetts or Bonnetts, however you want to pronounce it for roofing, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Affinity Energy and Environmental Engineers, again, as best as abatement, visual and air clearance, two thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And PFA Architects Professional Services, seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. So left still to pay for services being rendered or already having been rendered is the architect, we still owe them eighteen thousand, six hundred, seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Eighteen thousand what?
Six hundred, seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
So of that, six hundred thousand, you were telling me eighteen thousand's encumbered.
That's correct.
Well, that would leave five hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, not six hundred thousand. That's too much math.
Wait till I do math, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
He needs some money.
So.
Is that right? Took eighteen thousand out of it.
So in rough numbers, just looking, I, I've got to do it step by step. I'm sorry, but in rough numbers, if we look at the, um, state sales tax fund balance and the money remaining from the, um, county commissioners, that gives us two point nine. If we paid for all of it out of that, that's still gonna leave half million dollars in fund balance. Roughly.
Pretty close. Of course, you know, in a lot of this, just you all know this, but for people who might listen later, we really don't know every penny until people get to find the stuff and putting it in. But yeah, it'd be pretty close.
Got any more money laying around over there?
I wish. We've had to. It's gonna be really, really, really tight. But I think, so you're looking at a couple things in the way of funding. One is to borrow money, which has to go through the LGC. It'll take forever. Um, probably looking at two to three months be- before you get the approval, just guessing. Which means you can't issue a notice to proceed or begin any construction until you've secured funds to pay for the project. So that's one option, but there's the pitfalls of it. Uh, we could certainly ask the commissioners for more money. There's another option. Or we can take a very tight look and margin and look at available funds. Sharpen our pencils really, really good and hopefully bring it in with funds we have available. But it's gonna be real tight.
We, we're, we're, but we're as, we're as close as we can know today. We wanted obviously to have this conversation with you all before we dug really deep with the county manager and the, and their folks. There are things that you can work out like that. Of course, they have to take official action on some of that. The other thing that we could do probably independently that we don't want to do, I think, because we have made so much progress with, uh, capital building projects. Uh, we, you know, we've put together a really good team. We've had great cooperative work with this board and we have gotten a lot done with, more done than people would have expected with the money that we have. But one of the things we could self impose on, but it is, it, it, it does hurt you is, you know, next year not taking nine hundred thousand. And then that's just money we're not taking out of that capital reserve, you know? We could do that to ourselves.
I don't think there's a route we won't go down.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm not suggesting or making any recommendations. I'm just brainstorming. Yeah, I think the only recommendation that I would make, and you haven't asked for it, is I would be really cautious about a loan for all the reasons that Trevor mentioned and probably some more. But. Mr. Smathers, you've been involved in that LGC stuff. How long does it take to get it done on a fast track even?
Three or four months.
We don't have that much time.
No.
That answers that question, in my mind.
All right, Will.
So right now, I'm just wanna, so right now, we got a building that was valued at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Roughly, I think that's sort of what they were saying.
Axe appraisal.
Axe appraisal.
Somewhere around eight.
On the county commissioners from something that they was supposed to by a contract that was signed forty years ago, that they was supposed to provide us somewheres to be inside Wayne's Little City limits or the central office. So they gave us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar building, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cash, which equals out to be one point five million dollars if my math is correct, cause I've done way too much math tonight. So that means that we are coming up one million, one hundred thousand dollars short from what they gave us that they was supposed to, by a contract that was signed forty years ago, provide us a central office building. That's the way I look at it. This, that, that's not the opinion of this board. That's an opinion of myself. Because the county commissioners was supposed to provide us a place for the central office inside the town of Wayne's Little City limits. So right now, we're one million dollars short of what they gave us to begin with and said, you have till November or December to get out of this building and we give you this building. I, I, I guess I'm opinion, doing my own opinion right now. So in saying all that, I'm just very disappointed. I've been on this board for eighteen years. We have been fighting this battle ever since I've been on here. So now we've got to take a million dollars of our money that we could be putting into the school system, fixing our buildings or doing something for our school system. But instead of that, we're putting it, we're gonna have to put it in a central office, which is still for the sen- for our school system. But it's for something that should have been taken care of by the county, by the contract that we had many years ago. So I'm just very disappointed. And in return, I, I'm gonna say a thank you. Thank you for what they gave us. But am I happy with it? No. I wasn't happy to be before with it and I'm not happy with it now. I'm done, Mr. Francis.
Well, I was just gonna remind everybody, we did take official action, accepted the building, because and that contract was fulfilled at that moment. I think that was.
Well, I.
Is that right, Mr. Smathers?
I would, I would, yeah.
It is. We took action, so I, I understand your frustration.
Yeah. Well, it, it should be. Everybody in this county should be frustrated that we as a school system have to, we need to take one million dollars to put into a building that was given to us. And like I said, I, I'm sort of venting frustration. I've been on this board long enough. I'm venting frustration.
Your frustration is duly noted.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How, um, how inflated has current building material supply and demand, what's been the impact on this number, do you think, Josh?
I can tell you, I have to get you my phone on there, or you can come up and use mine.
I can tell you specifically, we talked to a couple on the electrical or the PM and E, from mechanical and electrical side of it. Um, on a commercial building before the COVID pandemic hit, it was running about twenty-two cents a square foot. It's gone up to around thirty-four cents a square foot, just based on the electrical. We were also told that actual construction material had gone up around forty-one percent by two different contractors. That's been since March. And I know a lot of y'all been to Lowe's and Home Depot and just two before now, seven, eight dollars a piece where you could get them for three or four dollars back of this.
Well, I knew that wood material had more than doubled for most part.
Well, I think we need to move forward on this.
Yeah.
I mean, I, we're in need to, if you want to talk some more or whatever, but I think we're looking at about two six.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, uh, yeah, we, I, I agree with Mr. Kirkpatrick. Yeah, I'm frustrated too. I didn't like it, but we, it's happened and we did agree to accept it. Uh, if anything, might just let them, you know, I would still, we'll still let them know that we came under a lot of unexpected expenses there of, of at least, you know, almost a hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff that we may not have had to spend, but I, no, not all of that. Say, say fifty thousand of it that we may not have spent, but that's not much compared to two point six million dollars. So, I, I think it's, it's this time, I would like to go ahead and just entertain a motion that we get this thing rolling and I would like to say that we accept John Bergen Construction as our base bid and lots of negotiations to do from here.
Okay, do we need to put a dollar amount on that?
No, we're just doing the low bid.
Agree into the contractor at this point?
Awarding the low bid.
But you're also, are you, we need to vote on each?
But you're also, are you, we need to vote on each alternate down through there, or we want to?
Yeah.
I think we need to be specific on the motion.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, you need, um, first to select a parent low bidder or whichever contractor you would like to select first.
Doing there, yeah.
The second thing will be, uh, which alternates, so you'll need a second or separate motion for alternates. And then the third and final motion could be, you know, what, what your funding choice would be, your, your way to proceed funding wise, and what that total dollar amount should be.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor for John Bergen Construction to be chosen by Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Say, but Dr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just want to say one thing, I'm glad it's somebody local, I, I don't know him personally, but, uh, I, I think that's good.
I will say that, um, uh, um, John Bergen has, uh, shared, uh, with us that he is using all local subs. So every, every sub that will be working for him are all locals.
Okay, that's good. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Are any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those voters say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was that Mr. Francis, did you go aye or nay?
I voted in the affirmative.
Okay, and Mr. Burnett, how did you vote?
I voted yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure for the record, there's a little bit of time lag and it sounded like somebody voted against it, so I wanted to make sure that we clarified that for the record, so it did pass unanimously by the members of the board present tonight. Okay, the next motion might be a little bit more detailed. So we're going to choose.
Next motion would be to, um, choose the base bid plus all alternates A one, A two, A three, I'm sorry, A one, A two, eliminate A three, E one, E two, E three, and eliminate E four, unless it's not included in the base bid.
I'm reading, I'm reading it right here and it is included.
It in the base bid on exterior doors.
So eliminate E four.
Okay. We have a motion from Dr. Rogers as stated.
Second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Is that including adjustments that we, you discussed as far as, or negotiations?
Negotiations within, that'll be afterwards, then we after the contracts. The contracts, we'll vote our amount here in just a second. No, that'll be next motion.
That's correct. Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those voters say aye?
Aye.
Uh, all those, uh, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I didn't hear anything from the folks calling in or anything, except that they were affirmative, I believe.
They were.
Okay.
On this, the third motion.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and the main reason that we wanted to have uh, a full board meeting was that, so that we'd have the discussion of all the members to include, so that we weren't having a building finance, or building grounds meeting and a finance committee meeting separately. So at this point, um, Mr. Finance Chairman, um, we're, we're saying and about to bring a motion that given the base bid plus the alternates that were just added, uh, plus a five percent contingency that should bring us around, uh, two point six million dollars is what we've put before the board, um, I guess I'm going to ask Finance if, um, what you see is the best option, is it, is it to use the, um, the funds remaining plus the, um, state sales, sales tax fund balance?
Yes.
All right.
Like that's the best word.
So with that said, so you're saying with those two funds, we got enough money to cover the two point six and leave some fund balance?
Yes.
All right, with that in mind, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that we approve, uh, two point six million dollars for this project.
Okay.
My second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Terms clarify, the, uh, sales tax reserve, that's the, uh, capital reserve, not dealing with any of our capital outlay money.
That's correct, capital outlay, uh, nine hundred thousand that we are operating on for this year is being funded by this current year's sta- state sales tax. Provided that our current, I just want to reiterate, it's very important, provided that our current s- state sales tax funds, the GO bond at one point six million, the nine hundred thousand that we're currently using in capital, and the hundred and eighty-two thousand paid in debt services for the Pisgah addition, provided that state taxes can support those indebtedness, we should be just fine. And no, no portion of the two point three million will be encumbered as a result.
Okay.
Two point three million will be used to help pay for this building.
Well, that money is not the current fund balance that we have.
That, that's correct, um, there is.
Different fund.
Yeah, there is a current expense fund balance, and you being on finance, um.
Cause the word fund balance was used earlier.
It's two.
Capital fund balance.
Yeah, two different fund balance, uh, areas, one is current expense, and as you know, we've been bringing that down, we've spent over a million a year, and then we got it down to six hundred thousand in the last report, and the auditors will talk to us about that. At the December meeting, we spent four hundred thousand, so we're, we're moving in the right direction to actualize our current expense budget, okay? I'm not going to promise you that everything's going to be perfect, but it looks like that plan is working. This fund balance is capital. It comes from, um, forty and forty-one sales tax just for capital, just for school systems, comes from the uh, state and comes to the county, and they use that to pay for bonds where we do buildings, the GO bond, the Pisgah project and other things. And they also use it to allocate our capital budget each year, which is nine hundred thousand, the two point three, um, I have to put my glasses on to see the rest of it, two point three eight, uh, four, five, three, eighty cents uh, is above and beyond that, uh, from everything that we verified at this point, and we will double check that again in the morning.
What is our current expense fund balance?
Current expense today?
Last month, whatever.
Well, we got it, we really, we only get a real one really after June thirtieth and the auditors come, it's about three, I don't have it in front of me, it's about three hundred, um, three hundred and something thousand.
Any other questions or comments?
Can we still?
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, that's, uh, let, let me get that number for you, it's, it's, uh, it, uh, I think it's a little over three million, not three hundred thousand.
That's what I was.
That's what I was thinking.
Left, left a few zeros off the end, it's a little over three million.
Sounds better.
Yeah.
And that's current expense, and we want to keep that in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And then get it stabilized, sorry about that.
That's right. Um, I guess my next statement is, goes along with what Stephen said, Mr. Kirkpatrick said, and this may not even be an option, but can we discuss this number with the commissioners and see if they'll help us out anymore with it? Is that an option?
Sure.
I mean, can't hurt, elec- election's over.
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to discuss it and disclaim it to them, and.
We've got a seven hundred thousand dollar building that's going to cost us two point six million.
Yeah.
I agree with that. There's no, there's nothing holding us back from talking, I just don't want it to hold us up on
No.
moving forward.
Well, I know, but I s- I agree, cause we need to get it in the building, we've got people scattered everywhere now.
That's right.
Or will have.
Yep.
Surely.
Any other questions or comments? I think that's a conversation we can have. There being nothing else, comments, questions, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Sound like we're getting ready to buy a building.
Wise.
Yeah. Or get it to where we can use it. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam, thank you, Mr. Josh, y'all, I know y'all have got a lot of input and.
Thank y'all very much.
And Dr. Nolte, we got to give you a little credit there too.
Thank you, I'm looking up that fund balance for you, because I want to give it to you before we leave.
Might as well give some of this.
You're in the meeting right after.
He's very clear on his current, of course, they're all his, but we, we, we manage our luck at him, and he says, that's my fund balance, and I'm like, oh, well, this is my fund balance.
That's right.
They're actually all his, but we manage different things.
Well, Dr. Bill's finishing that up, I'd just like to s- thank all parties concerned, I mean, as Stephen said, he's been on the board eighteen years, and I've been on the board for twenty years, and we've this is something that's been a labor that we've, and Jimmy's been on here twenty years as well, I mean, we've worked on this project for a long time, and I just, it's almost like a celebration time to me, and I just, it's like a burden lifted off of us, and we're going to get this thing done now, and, and, um, it's one thing we've had on our minds for, again, twenty years. And, uh, now maybe, uh, this will be, uh, completed and we can, uh, Stephen, we can check it off, even if it's a hard pill to swallow at times, but.
It's a stepping stone, Mr. Kirkpatrick, we got more to go.
And I think that.
There's more, many more needs of this public school system.
Absolutely.
I think our county commissioners can.
This is something that has, uh, loomed over our heads for a long time, and I think the the county commissioners will continue to support us in a positive manner, and, and, uh, I've not gotten any indication other than that from any of them that I've talked to, so I think it looks, the future looks bright, what's encouraging to me is, is those title forty, I mean, Article forty and forty-one funds are a indicator that the economy in Haywood County's been doing pretty well, despite the COVID, and I think.
Mr. Francis, I found that report from Andy Deal, and he will be coming to the December board meeting. Uh, the current, uh, expense fund balance as of June thirtieth was two million, nine hundred thousand.
Three million.
It was three, yeah, it was three million, three, a year ago.
There you go.
And we don't want that to continue to go down, but as I said, we have decreased the amount of fund balance we have been spending
Yeah.
over the last few years, and hope to get that actualized to pretty close to zero in a couple of years.
Very good.
And a lot of that was spent for good use to help the employees better than.
That's right, we did give a bunch of pay.
And that's what it's for, that's exactly what it's for, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing, you're talking about the sales tax, uh, when we were politicking, Kevin Ansley said June was the most money that Haywood County had ever gotten. Even with the COVID, it's the highest sales tax revenue we've ever got in, in the history.
That's great. Again, thanks to the board members, we've met a lot about this, I know Building and Grounds has really worked hard. I'd like to congratulate the Building and Grounds Committee for the hard work and dedication, and Dr. Putnam, et cetera, et cetera, all you guys at the central office, thank you very much. There being nothing else to come before the board, we'll adjourn.